All right, being seven o'clock, I'd like to open the meeting for August fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. Do you have any, uh, bills or men? All right, uh, open forum, anyone here to open forum? All right, all right, seven o'clock, Hammond Woods, Department of Subdivision Plan Field Completion Discussion with applicant, this is Tim Reardon. How you doing?
Good, only good.
Good, uh, just to, uh, a letter was sent to you on July thirtieth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from, uh, the town plan, Randy Benson, just read it really quick. I am ready to notify you that the current issues at the Hammond Woods subdivision on the unfinished work and your unwillingness to replenish the escrow account from the site inspection for Graves Engineering. The matter will be discussed at the next planning board meeting on August fourteenth. And the Graves Engineering report May twenty first, Mike Andre has the sales for not building a concrete subdivision pool among other things. They've also received complaints from numerous residents from the subdivision of the length of time it has taken to complete the work and the quality of work to be performed. They are attached, uh, since the work is now being done without the offset of graves, because all inspections have been suspended due to lack of funds. And the escrow account, I recommend the planning board discuss the drawn-out procedure to ensure the work is performed through the approved subdivision planning town standards before the acceptance of the road by the town. Uh, but based on a discussion on Graves Engineering conducting the site inspection, do you authorize us to find the copy of the subdivision in close schedule? You know that the bond to the additional inspection to be done at any time without notification. That's just pretty much the gist of it. Uh, the packet that we as the other board members have include the Graves report from May twenty first. It was mentioned in the letter sent to Tim, as well as a December seventh report. And then, um, some emails from, um, concerns residents of Hyde Road. Twenty-two Hyde Road, twenty-seven Hyde Road, twenty-one Hyde Road. Twenty-five Hyde. So, all right, just, uh, let's get an update from you, Tim, as far as, uh, where we are based upon, um, completion.
The bill, I've always paid all the bills you guys sent me.
Yep, absolutely.
This one, when we did the original curving sidewalks, we didn't get them all completed.
Okay.
Okay, so somebody called to get an inspection. I didn't because they're not completed. You don't call for a bill until it's done.
Okay.
Okay, Graves came, looked at stuff, said some stuff was wrong.
Yep.
Wanted some manholes turned, which he did not discuss last December. Last December, it was just moving the swales over, would be all set. This year, after we put them in, he said no. And I asked him if he wanted to be there for the paving of the sidewalks. He said, no, I don't need to be, just for the road.
Okay.
That's why I don't feel that bills.
All right, I know on the curving, were some of the curvings over the catch basins?
Yes, and those have been repaired.
Okay.
But he also made me dig up three of them, turn them so they catch better. Some of the curvings were not straight as I wanted, I had them cut out, had them repaired, all those are ringing out, so. As far as progress, trust me, I'm not happy with the progress either, but these guys are subcontractors. I've called other guys to try to get them in there. No one wants to jump in the middle with some.
Okay, now what about, um, I know a couple of the items that were listed on this, uh, May twenty first from report from, uh, from Graves.
Mm-hmm.
Um, have you started any of the looming between the sidewalks and the, uh, curving?
Yes.
Now, has that been addressed, the, uh, the three-foot wide cross plot because a lot of it, some of it was only two feet?
Yeah, we're gonna cut some of it, and it goes from two to three feet, stamped right on the plan that that's accepted.
Okay. Do we have the plan at all? No.
No. I want to get the plan out.
And when he pe- paved the sidewalks.
Yep.
This was a paver's excuse, nothing to back it up.
It is.
Yeah.
They paved the four feet and they flattened, spread out four foot six, some areas barely, maybe a little more.
All right, okay, now, um, I know that also one might refu- uh, reported also mentioned the sidewalks to be paved in two lifts.
Oh, yeah.
Any question there?
Yes, there was none in two lifts, you can see in a few spots where there's one lift and then the other one. You can actually see where I cut some out, how thick it is.
All right, and then where you, where you loom, has the end of the asphalt underneath and gravel been removed to create that six inches thick of, uh?
Four inches.
Four inches?
Four inches. He's not doing it, he's not showing the cross-sections and things.
Okay, all right, that's all we have though, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can bring in the other ones if you guys.
Okay, all right, listen, we're just going by what our representative goes by.
Totally understand, because he's black and white, he wants it done like the plans, and that's what I think.
Correct, well, he's seen, the plan says six inches of loom.
Well, it says four inches on the plan, and it shows gravel underneath. You know, we cut out the asphalt where there was asphalt.
Okay.
This is what the plan showed, trust me, Mike, I went over this.
All right, maybe we need to set something up with, um, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page as far as what the, what the, what the specs are.
Sure, not a problem, like I said, the sooner I can get this done, the sooner everybody's, okay?
Is there a detail sheet on that?
No, it's not, that's what I'm saying, it's not the showing the cross-sections and things like that.
So there's nothing indicates on the plan that this only four inches is required?
It's not on this one.
Do you have another set?
Six inch lower than seed, right? That's fine, if there's another plan that's four inches. No, the other one is the same thing, it's just a little more detailed, I believe.
Has your subcontractor had this page here?
Four-inch dirt soil. Okay.
Yeah.
It's contradictory.
Yeah, it is a contradiction. That's all I'm saying.
This is just showing, if it was not on, in pavement, it'd be six inches of loom on.
Yeah, but that's in the.
I have a construction estimate that was reviewed by Graves Engineering, it does indicate four inches of loom.
Yep.
Okay, all right, okay. And then has the, has it been addressed yet where the sidewalks are lower than the curving?
Yes, I had three to four sections, we added another inch of water. Some sections can't be because the utilities are so low, you have this much of a hole, utilities were put in wrong.
What happened, National Grid, whatever, you're saying the other kind of electric utility?
Mm-hmm.
Um, any questions by the board?
I don't see anything.
All right, and then I guess getting back to the, um, the site visit, we were claiming the, with the bill and stuff like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, it is in our rules and regulations as far as.
No, I understand, yeah.
They can be done at any time, so.
You know, but you don't inspect certain things if it's not complete.
The thing is, if we get, if we get a complaint, we'll send the representative up to check it out, and that's what happened.
Mm-hmm.
And we do have a, even like, I mean, we can see how far past, we, we do have a policy as far as a fifty dollar a day late fee.
No, yeah.
Okay.
No, that's fine, I mean, I, like I said, I have no problem paying your bills, okay?
So. Yeah, okay.
But there's also an association up there with covenants that everything has to be approved by me. People are complaining, but I'm not complaining back to them, to me, it's their land once they buy a house. So, they're not supposed to add on pools and garages and all these other, even putting a shed without my approval, but they do. Who do I bring that up to?
That's, I mean, listen, they own the parcel land in town, it's so right to put a shed, a pool in, and stuff like that.
That's, no, not under the covenants of that place that you guys approve.
Probably a company, a private homeowners association, the town doesn't get involved.
Yeah.
Correct.
I think you approved that.
They may have approved to put it in place, but it doesn't involve the town in part of forcing it.
Okay.
I'll go after them, if they want to complain to me, I'll bring it up with them.
Well, I think they have valid complaints with, with the progress that's going on, you know, it's, it's not a vindictive thing, but it's been going on for a long time, it seems like, so.
Oh, no. It has, it's a lot of work.
That's understood.
I'm trying to get as much progress, and like I said, if I could have got someone else in there to finish these things, I would.
At what point did.
It's a minor issue, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Not like it's, I can't touch it. Last year, I think we had that argument about how much I spent last year and I got nothing back.
Yep. Sure.
So. You know, all my bills, all the other contractors I used, none of them ever went up in price. But for some reason, Graves estimate went up in price when I need to try to get money back.
So, to the chair, where, where are we at right now and what is the expected completion? I know it was originally last fall and that was moved to the spring.
Yep, we, um, sidewalks and berms are finished.
Okay.
We're adding loom now, um, hopefully the loom is done by, I would say, the end of next week.
Okay.
All seeded, and, uh, we have, then I'll put in for a release. And when I get some more money, we'll raise the basins and I have to put a septic in on lot seven, and I'd rather not pave the top coat of the road before that's done, but then I'll pave the roof.
So you don't think you're paving this fall?
Oh, yeah, no, I'll pave it.
You're paving this fall?
Oh, yes.
All right, so would you have a problem if we set deadline dates for you?
That's fine.
All right.
No, like I said, I want it done, it's just, there's a process to do it.
Okay. Oh, no, absolutely.
Nope.
Absolutely, so, um, our next meeting is September fourth and September eighteenth. So between now and the eighteenth, because, would you rec- Randy, would you recommend that Mike go check out the, the loom, seed, sidewalks and curbing?
I mean, you'll have to determine if it meets the, uh, approved plan or the approval from the construction estimate, which will a- again incur another fee.
Okay. Okay. All right. All right.
I'd rather wait until I'm finished, and then I'll let him know.
As far as what, with the loom and seed?
You know, to check the loom and seed, all the other stuff.
Yep, okay, all right, so let's set it deadline date for September eighteenth.
That's fine.
Then we'll be on our, and we'll, we'll visit that, we'll visit that.
Yeah, and then you can, you can discuss as far as.
And then.
That'll be September eighteenth meeting, before that, so we have something by the seventeenth.
September eighteen, right. Okay, all right.
Yeah, no, that's fine, no.
Shall we do that?
We'll do that, because some of the week, uh, which should be in six, seventeen, eighteen.
Yeah, because.
No, like I said, the loom and.
Yeah, just to go by like thirty day increment, I think that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Would you, like, do you guys have a problem with that? All right, and then. Have top quota pavement by, um, mid-November, because we'll meet in November twenty.
Oh, that's fine, that's not a problem.
All right.
So when is the, um, fall town meeting? I think the goal was to get this on the file, fall town meeting for an accepted.
It won't meet it, it won't, it won't be the deadline.
No, because you gotta do the lease and vows, then it's gotta go to the selectmen, right?
She's a daughter, but it's not the man who has it.
So it's gonna have to be for the selectmen. Now, I think the question hanging out there is, if you don't get done by, uh, if we don't, if we, if mid-November you don't get done, and we have our September money.
Oh, you're rich.
So, and we don't, and by November, uh, our meeting in November twenty, if it's not done.
I don't have a payment by then, you guys take it over.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I'm done.
And then.
No, I, I, trust me, I don't want anyone to argue with you.
All right, okay, all right, and then coming back to that, to the outstanding bill.
Yeah.
Can you have it in by Monday?
Sure, I can have it tomorrow, I'll pay it, but I just don't feel that's fair.
Okay. All right.
If you're halfway done digging something, do you have come, someone come and inspect it for a footing?
Yeah. If an neighbor called and said, hey, I think he's doing something wrong, and it's, I've had it happen, and they show up.
I'm sorry.
You've been on the other end of that.
I've been on the, I've been on the, I've been on the rant.
No, I totally agree.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, I'm there most days, all you gotta do is stop, tell me, I will give somebody that, you know. And has it been long? Yes, have I worked with most of them? Yes, I have.
Got you. So, all right, do you guys want to hear, because I think there's some residents, do you want to hear any comments or anything?
Uh, we can, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, if you're one of the Hyde, Hyde Road, oh, absolutely, just state your name.
That's us. Hi. An address.
An address.
Um, Don Nichols, Hyde Road.
Ross Nichols.
Um, we've been residents of Hyde Road for now nearly, nearly four years. Um, we were one of the, actually the third ones in, and we knew what we were signing up for when we started. Construction project, here we go, little bit of ebbs and flows in the road and, um, and some work. It was all fine and good until what we're seeing the past few weeks when it comes to sidewalks and curbing. We feel that we've built a quality home, um, with Tim as our builder, and we just feel that some of the things that we're seeing now, we, we need to speak up. The sidewalks, the waviness to the sidewalks, the curbing inconsistencies to the sidewalk.
Curves that are starting to deteriorate, deteriorate already.
Curves that are starting to, right, and I actually took a walking tour, um, this evening, and took some photos, if you don't mind, um, sending those around. Thank you. You can see where, on our property, there's a packet in there from twenty-two Hyde, where we took a photo earlier this week and it showed we had asphalt on our front property. And you can see that we did receive a bucket full of loam at some point today, and that asphalt was covered over. It was not taken off, we actually dug this evening through the loam, and we will put it back, um, but the asphalt is still there, that's of concern to us. You know, will the grass grow on that? We also took a walk over to twenty-three Hyde Road where we did notice that today, um, and you'll see the differences in that packet where the actual asphalt was taken up. And it does look like there was an effort made, thank you, for taking up that asphalt. However, when the asphalt was put down, it is dug, gorges into the curbing. So, again, you know, the quality of the curbing is now really subpar, and I just feel that.
And across the street from that location is where the tractor actually ran up on the new curb and.
Ran up on the curb, and again, there's a photo of that, and again, you know, if this is a development that you're looking to take over as a town, by the time he's saying he's going to be completed in mid-November. Do we, you as a town want to be taking those over, um, without correction and remediation, um, that's of concern.
And something I recall from a me- meeting last year, watching it on TV, I thought something had been said about the lower medians that are supposed to be in granite on the, on the road going up.
On the road going up?
Is that true?
I don't know if that's part of spec because they are, you know, the, the wavy curbing going around it, that asphalt, I think they're called keep-clad curbing or something.
I knew if they were on the granite, Graves would have brought that up already.
If it's not on the plan, then it's not on the plan, it's just, I thought it, I heard that last year.
I thought it had been horrible, yeah. And again, you know, our voice today is just for us saying that we just want it looked at, we want to make sure that we're bringing this to your attention of what it looks like today. So that you consider look of that and feel of that, and if any remediation needed to occur prior to, um, it being taken over by the town.
The town will take it over without a town meeting, right?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
So, there's no way the town's gonna take it over anytime before May.
Till the engineer sets up on itself.
It has to be done at town meeting.
Engineer will have to go and inspect his subgrade and everything before the final payment goes on, if something's wrong, he's gonna have to repair it before the final payment goes on.
Obviously, if the seed, the loom and the seed is down, are you gonna dig out to see what's.
They'll have to do whatever it takes to, to engineer.
To ensure that it's built suspect.
That's, that's where our concern is.
Yeah, that's just the concern.
I mean, once, once something's.
That's why, yeah, that's why the engineer goes out and, and inspects them at a, at a meter.
This is the first time we've ever been in a situation, we just want to know what's going on.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, Mike Fornier, Hyde Road, is there anything in the plans regarding streetlights and trees before you put the top coat on?
I don't think this is a detailed plan.
Yeah, this is, this is, I have everything in land share, so this doesn't have a, a. There is trees, quite a few trees, Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, they're going to turn them, and there is two or three streetlights that I've tried to get mass electric up there since spring, so. Oh, yeah, well, like I said, it's not an easy thing, it's, you know.
Question again, sorry, um, Don Nichols again, Hyde Road, um, just a question regards to trees, is that like, is there like a per property, per tree allocation?
It's all laid out on the original plan, the first seven feet from the curbing is part of the roadway, so that's where all the trees will be.
Yeah. Yeah. On both sides of the road.
Yes.
Okay, so, would we be getting prior notification, um, prior to that occurring and the dig on property?
It's not too appropriate.
It's the town?
Part of the town. Okay. All right. So, all right, you fine with that, uh, going forward, that's gonna go?
So, so when are we getting graves out there, when, when do you have them?
Um, like I said, I hope they get all the loom in by the end of next week.
Okay.
As soon as I get that in, I'll let the graves come out, if you find any things, we'll repair them again.
Okay.
We'll have to settle not only what you, it's only do, but more for his inspections in the future before we can send him out there.
No, I appreciate that, and, you know, it's progress, you know, we get to this point, I get to talk with them, send them back, if I can get the trees in, you know, I have trees on order. It's just whether I can, you know, it's just a matter of time, so, there's a process to which one goes first.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Okay, and I appreciate that, instead of just sending graves out when I'm not done.
Yeah. Yeah, but you, yeah, when you're done with the loom, you're gonna pick up the phone and call.
You understand that? Yes, no, I'll walk right in here, I came in, you know?
Okay. Okay, all right. Okay, so, all right.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Tim, thank you very much.
And then I'll see if I can get you a more detailed plan.
Yeah, that'd be great, it'd be great.
Yeah. Shows more of this.
So, is this power being removed for sod to put down, or is it sort of going on top of the stem? I mean, these are the kind of things that just.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm concerned that, that we're waiting to send graves out till the sod gets done, because you're not gonna see this once the, once the loom gets done. So, there's some, there's some serious issues of, of the construction phase of this that's, has me concerned.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, now what's gonna go in there?
Well, I'm assuming that this is gonna come out and, and it's gonna be dug down, but it would be nice to confirm that.
Well, the problem is, like, the loom is already there in many places, and they just put it over, I mean, I, I witnessed myself.
Yeah, and also, I had to speak up.
Um, yeah, Ross Nichols.
Yeah.
Uh, so if you'll notice, like, at the end of all the curbs where they cut out for the driveways, they just piled the asphalt that they pulled off and just put it behind the curb, and they left that there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at.
That's exactly what we were looking at.
Yeah, and then, and in front of our house where I dug out, it's underneath the loam.
Yeah.
I guess when Mike goes out to do it.
Can we keep these pictures? Absolutely.
When he goes does an inspection, does something.
And I think they're all date stamped.
They are, yeah.
You would not.
So we lose vocal.
Yeah.
He just poke through, just as it checks and balances, and his time's his time as far as that goes on inspection.
The addresses and everything.
Yeah. Yep.
Just take extra time to go, that's what I'm concerned about.
It should be done, yeah, because that's what, you know, we, I mean, we need some back.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
So the plan is that hopefully you'll be done, Mike will do inspections, so we can record it December, September eighteenth to meet.
Yeah, we're gonna review, we can, we use this at this.
Okay.
The subject problems.
Thank you.
All right. Hey, can I tell that, though? All right, seven oh five, public hearing continued for Landville Realty Special Park and Site Plan for one twenty-nine thirty twelve Treehouse, delivery edition.
Anyone here for the treehouse, sign in?
Oh, yes, I haven't talked to you all week, but, but I do happen to have the treehouse.
Yeah, just fling them over.
There you go. Um, I can report that they had everything done except for one item, uh, that Graves wanted to address, and they actually did address it. It was reference to a cat basin this week, and they did, um, revise, and the plan to show the change for the cat basin. And the fire department have recommended moving the hydrant, is that what it was?
Correct, adding a hydro.
Adding a hydro, excuse me, and, uh, so they're addressing that as well, so they have, um, completed all the, uh, comments from Graves Engineering. Have addressed all the comments from Graves Engineering. And they are part of the process, we discussed it last week, they're requesting a waiver on landscaping due to the location of the new building, or it's way back in the woods on the road, so.
So Mike is asking us to add a waiver behind it, so.
Yeah, they've requested the waiver, so the board will have to grant that waiver for the landscaping.
Councilman, again, I'm David Vice, I'm project civil engineer. Also tonight, two representatives of Treehouse, Nate, Damian, Garrett, and Kim are here, as well as, if you have any questions about the facility. The only other waiver I'd like to come out to is a parking waiver, so there's two waivers we're requesting, and now is the one at the, at the last meeting also.
Yeah, that, that is a result of the size of the building, you require a large amount of parking, about due to the fact it's really a warehouse building and it's kind of gray area and right the bylaws as far as the parking they need. They are providing appropriate parking for the number of employees they expect to be working in the building, so parking issue has been addressed, so I'm satisfied that that waiver could be granted.
And then we were also able to get the conservation commission approve the order conditions last week, and issued that on Thursday, so.
When you inspect the A and R, in the next forty-five days or so?
Yes, I think so, yep. Yeah, we just, um, talk, Mark LePrado's gonna probably, he's been busy this summer, but it's on his schedule this summer.
Yeah, because, yeah, last meeting we did the, uh, sixty-one A release on that fire story. Go to the selectmen, let's go to the selectmen, right?
Yeah, they're waiting, they, I think they're gonna be addressing that meeting on twenty-seventh of August.
Okay, all right.
Believe it is.
So this is strictly a supply warehouse, not a product warehouse?
Uh, it's a drag and storage warehouse.
Drag and storage?
Drag and storage, yeah.
Any other questions in the board?
Looks like everything is covered with grades, so.
All right, any, any comments from the public at all? All right.
So, can we, um, prior to the A and R, the property being transferred, is that, can we approve this?
Yeah, because in the decision, you can write it up, it's all subject to A and R.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, do you need to do the, uh, vote on the, uh, the parking waiver prior to closing the, uh?
A vote on the parking waiver and a vote on the landscaping.
Landscaping. Make motion, reapprove, um, the, the waiver for parking and the waiver for landscaping, as stated in my plans.
Second.
Fallows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, um, um, software C C W, what are you saying, is this should be approved or?
Yeah, they fixed it.
They fixed it, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, it should, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
In regards to water, because it's, there are some, I mean, pure tar, I think there's some, that's right, there's a lot of water. Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve site plan as stated with the conditions?
Uh, there'll be two, two conditions, uh, one is there, they'll have a pre-construction, um, before they receive a notice received for the, uh, work to be done and also they will be, um, getting approval for the A and R, but they'll, we're having, in anticipation that this was gonna be approved, we're actually having a construction, pre-construction meeting tomorrow, so they'll probably have the meeting before I even write the decision.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Keep some moving, keep some moving.
Yeah.
Uh, and then with the, the, the two waivers that we approved, guys?
Yep. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, thank you guys very much.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Sorry, this is where I started, so I, well, not able to make copies, so you might not pass it around, just took a look at it. Graves has been stating no with on this, so. Should be addressed.
Got a seven ten, continue the public hearing for orders land management, self-storage facility.
Are you here for the, uh, self-storage unit?
Okay, okay, how are you?
Very good.
I am.
Alright.
Actually, I, because of the fact that we couldn't pass that around.
Yes.
Um, I actually kind of wrote down basically the items that Graves, yeah, the bullet points of what Graves was indicating that had to be addressed in before.
Yeah, the bullet points, okay, yeah. Yeah, now, has he, has, uh, the applicant received this report from Graves?
Uh, yes.
You, you got it?
I actually got it this afternoon.
Okay, alright.
Okay, should I?
No, go ahead, Ray is gonna do his bullet points and, uh...
I'll do the bullet points, he might be addressing some, at the meeting.
Okay, how are you?
One of Graves, uh, said there were no building elevation supplied with the app, uh, with the application yet.
There actually is a detail, but not the office building. There's a detail of the storage units.
Right, right, that's, he indicated the, the administration office building.
Building up the, the office.
And, uh, said that they need to submit a written request for the parking waiver, they are requesting a waiver for parking, but they haven't...
We did submit a written request, or we asked for an interpretation, but we, well, we don't even know if there is a waiver required, but we did write a letter asking clarification.
The Z E O, to the Z E O, to the, to the network?
The Z E O hasn't supplied any thing to make a recommendation of whether a parking waiver is required, so that's something that will have to be addressed.
Okay.
Uh, the fire department, it's actually, in that plan, they had two comments in reference to, um, lose a hydrant and, um...
We've added a hydrant and, and we've showed access.
You showed the access.
And we've added a hydrant.
Right, so they, they had addressed that issue.
The hydrant, just so you know, it is located right by, there's a gate, this is the same rendering as before, it didn't change it because it's, there's a fire hydrant right before the gate, and the gate will have a lock box, Knox box of the fire department.
Uh, the next item he brought up is the road widening, um, will have to be done, um, because it connects through twenty, it will require the approval of Mass D O T.
Well, I think he asked about it, but the thing is, the road widening starts over here, we're not going into the right of way, but, I mean, we could request it, I just, we'll get our approval, we'll go there.
Uh, well, I think one of the issues that was brought up in, in discussions about this is where the stormwater is going to go for the increase in pavement.
Okay, that wasn't in his letter, but go ahead, okay.
No, I'm, I'm saying, cause I, I had been spoken, speaking with the highway supervisors, one of his concerns that are they addressed? I didn't know the answer to the question at the time, but they're questioning, cause Mass D O T might have an issue with that, if you were planning to connect to the state drainage system, Mass D O T would have to approve that.
There, there's an inlet at the, at, near the intersection, and what we're doing is we're widening the road, you can see, this is the right of way line and here's the curb line, we're taking the curb line and because there's a utility pole, utility pole, we're going eleven feet off the, off the right of way line, so from this area where we're widening the road, it's over twenty feet wide over here, it's seventeen at the, where we begin, begin the widening, but then it's twenty-eight feet. Anyway, so it's a, it's a, a triangle of pavement that we're adding.
So, it's not a widening all the way from the driveway to, it's a turn in.
Correct, right, we're the, uh, there's a, there's an opening now, a curb opening there, we'll close that opening and take the widening straight up.
Well, the, the issue is the highway supervisor said, once the road's widened, it gets given to the town and becomes a town issue, and there's a stormwater issue there with more runoff as a result of more curbs here.
Yeah, there's gotta be a little bit of runoff, but not, okay.
The town wants it addressed before the town takes over the ownership of the road.
We're doing your favor.
Do you, I mean, yeah, and it's, it's, do you want us to widen it or not widen it? Because we were only making it a little wider for the residents.
I mean, it's just like any other project, if you're putting in a new road, if you're creating an issue where storm drains has to be addressed, such as the applicant we had earlier tonight, it has to be addressed before the town's going to take over the road.
Got it, we, we got that, okay, but as, um, so, we want to address the stormwater with Mass D O T or the highway department?
It depends on where the water's going, that hasn't been addressed.
Well, there's, it's going to an inlet that's by the intersection.
That's owned by Mass D O T, so it has to be approved by them, if you're increasing the stormwater to the system.
Well, the thing is, if you were doing, if you were doing work up here, that water would go, be going down the curb, you wouldn't ask this person to go to Mass D O T. You get what I'm saying?
That's a state requirement, that's not our requirement.
Well...
Mass D O T requires you're gonna increase the amount of water into the storm drain system, they have to approve.
But doesn't, and I'm only asking, you know, I'm kinda just a little slow at times, every cur, every driveway opening, you, you get some water onto Griffin Road, that water onto Griffin Road runs down into that catch basin.
Well, you're actually increasing the road that the town's going to own, so it becomes a town problem.
So, I think that, I think what Randy's getting at, Ralph, is the fact that you're making the, the actual, um, Griffin Road wider, the public way wider.
Right, so you, you don't wanna, I mean, we don't have to get that up.
Which was a request from the board.
Correct, oh, yeah, I know.
Right.
We weren't expecting, look at these, look at deed, right?
Right. So, let's just say if the applicant doesn't widen that section of Griffin Road, then, then it's off the table.
If he doesn't increase the amount of impurities there, it, right, exactly.
Alright, then let's just leave it normal right now and if, if people want me to do a favor later, I can, but, you know what I mean? Well, no, I'm, I mean, I'm only trying to clean up the area, that's, that's it, and make everybody happy.
I remember we discussed that, they wanted it a little wider, maybe round it a little bit.
Right, exactly, you know what I mean, so I'm not trying to open up a, a business deal, so let's leave it the normal width with no widening, right? And then that way I don't have to do stormwater, I mean, cause this thing is just kinda, no, every meeting, it costs more and more money, and then you go to the state, you know, I could be six months and I'm already getting conservation saying, well, how come you haven't been through a planning board yet? You're gonna have to refile over there if it takes much longer, and I'm like, nothing's changed, it's the same piece of land, you know what I mean? So, you know, I'm just trying, every time I come, I try to be the nice guy, say, I'll widen it, I'll pave that section, it doesn't matter to me, you know what I mean? Whatever, the fire department wants a hydrant, I say, okay, I'll put a hydrant up there, but, you know what I mean, I, I kinda just wanna get this thing approved so we can get digging on it to put in the detention basin to control the, the water and everything that we have up there.
But the other item that is been asked by conservation, the building department, everything.
Sure.
The wall hasn't been signed off by an engineer.
Conservation signed off that they were, and, and we can go back to the meetings, and I've been there over to Tom O'Malley already, that the base of the wall can stay.
Right.
So, they don't care what happens after they approve the base of the wall. If I could've got Kurt and an engineer to stamp it, then Kurt would've been fine with it, I paid an engineer to come up from Jersey and certify that that wall had to be taken down to approximately eight feet and sloped back, we did all that. Conservation doesn't care because they already approved that the base of the wall is to stay where it's at.
But Kurt, the building official has said that until an engineer says the wall was built per the plan that the engineer certified from New Jersey.
Yeah, we, we will go out and do an as-built survey of the wall to make sure it complies with the reduction that was done. That's gonna be done, and I didn't know that that was a requirement at this level, but that's gonna be done.
It's not, it's, it's not a building permit, the building official isn't satisfied that you didn't even build this yet.
Yeah, we'll do that, but then, I wanna just stay focused. Okay. But that's okay, we can't build anything till we get a building permit, but we will go ahead and, and that certification, cause we were waiting for this to come, you know, get through here, and then we're gonna go do an as-built of the wall, uh, we have to do some others, you know, and, and some other survey work, and then we would, um, certify it to the building department, so we'll get that.
But if the, if it's, has to be changed as a result of meeting the requirements, then you're gonna change your plan, you have to come back before the...
No. No, no, the, it's already been done, the, the wall has been reduced.
No, I understand that, but just concerned with whether it's done correctly, I'm just giving you a heads up.
But we, we're sure where the wall's gonna go.
It was done by the engineer at plan, okay, she told me what I had to do and that's what we did, we didn't vary from that one iota, not even by an inch, because, you know, it has no meaning to any of this building, you know what I mean? So, I was only putting the wall up to keep it neat and clean, cause that's how I like stuff, and then Kurt said, hey, anything over four feet, you gotta get engineered, so I had to hire a, a structural engineer to come up from Jersey and tell me what I needed to do, conservation accepted that, and then we went ahead and did it. So, that's all been done, so when we get to zoning, it, cause that's a zoning infraction, not like it's a, of anything to hinder my planning board, we'll deal with Kurt on that and get that signed off, because otherwise, he's not gonna issue any building permits, but we're trying to get the planning board to say, this is all set, yes, you can do this, good luck with Kurt and getting your building permit, and then we go over there, that's all we're trying to do. We're not trying to cut any corners, I, I, you know, I address everything that needs to be done, um, and I've talked to, you know, the deputy chief, he's okay with everything, he, I told him I was gonna put a hydrant up there, he's happy with that, so we are trying to do our due diligence to make everybody happy, the neighbors, planning board, conservation, Kurt.
Shall we go through the other, any other items? Yes, any other bullet points you had, Randy?
Um, they had, he had a couple items that decapitated for the twenty-four hours of tension time, weren't on the plan or weren't supplied to him.
Yeah, they were taken off that we put back on.
And then de-watering during construction, we wanted that to be addressed, and I believe there was additional comments on the, was it the back page of that letter? Graves' letter?
Yes, there is. And I, I can go through that, a- as far as de-watering during construction, um, I think maybe at the beginning of the project, when there was a, the grade was a lot higher, there was a concern about that, but, you know, it's, we're down at grade, so it's not like there's gonna be a lot more de-watering that has to be done, and, you know, so, I don't know if that's an issue anymore, is what I'm saying. Um, we, we know that, we've done test pits and we're gonna go out and redo test pits, but we know the groundwater's down below the surface, so... Yeah, when you have those scheduled, have you scheduled those yet? Well, no, no, we were gonna... Oh, I, I always say that for the purpose of Mike being able to go out there and see how it is. Oh, yes, okay, that's a good point, I guess, one of the things was, we were working off the prior test pit information here to design the new drainage system, we took away the porous pavement. Yep. Okay, so we took away the porous pavement, we put, um, interceptors, uh, of infiltration trenches, below-grade infiltration trenches to take all the roof runoff and discharge. The, um, I, i- it's valid that they may want some more test pits done in those locations to confirm that the soil, uh, can accept it and we're not within the groundwater, I, based on the old results, we're far away from the groundwater, but we planned on doing, as a result of the, the letter, do some test pits, um, to confirm the data. But it, it's not gonna change anything, maybe something has to get bigger or smaller, but, um, okay, are there any other items you wanna discuss?
Well, he had a whole list of them.
Yeah, I, I was gonna, you hit, yeah, and I was gonna, I was just gonna hit, um, of these, of these items, um, the first nine are okay, item, item ten, okay, is where we talk about the partially, partial widening of Griffin Road. Yeah, actually, just turn to page, uh, I think the bullet points are ran, page five, can you turn to page five? Oh, I was, okay, and then I was gonna go through, well, also... The bullet ones. Okay, number... Sign with number twenty-eight. Okay, okay. Just additional. Yeah, yeah, um, just so you know, it, it is the summertime. Yeah. And everybody was on vacation, so they came back, we had three days to get the plan, you know, to wrap up the drainage, those guys were all on vacation. Yeah. So, there's a bunch of typos, and that's what a lot of these comments are about, you know, things that were not done. Okay. So, item twenty-eight, um, talks about the boulder retaining walls, and, um, we had our geotechnical group come up, and what we, what we intended to do, and we thought it'd be a condition of approval, is that we'd certify that they were cut down to the height that they had to be cut down. Twenty-nine, one, one sheet wasn't stamped with my seal, um, thirty, uh, seasonal high groundwater is what I was talking about, so we...
These are the test pits.
The test pits, so we had test pits from before. Yes. And we're gonna, that's what I was saying, we'll, we'll do new test pits. We're gonna do more, yep. Yep. Thirty-one, okay, there was just some information missing, cause we used a different program to run the hydrology, since we changed the underground, uh, system. Uh, thirty-two is the infiltration capacity, again, that's, um, you know, will the ground absorb the water, given a certain amount of time? So, that was, the test pits would confirm that. Thirty-three, um, we have the underground infiltration system, it was asking about the overflow, actually, we should, we, we omitted a detail, uh, in this kind of system, we have the downspouts are piped into the ground, and at the downspout, there's an overflow. Okay. So, if the water backs up, it backs up there, you know, and we, we don't have to tie these into the drainage system. Works better that way, make sure we get it all in the ground, okay? Um, the next thirty-four through thirty-nine, again, are just typos or some mislabeling in our haste to get the drawings done. Yep. Forty, this is, uh, one where we, we have several catch basins in series, um, and what we didn't do is put the detail that shows the catch basin is integral with a manhole, you want the catch basin to fill up and then overflow into the drainage system, not the drainage from one catch basin go into the other. So, the detail didn't make it, it's just an integral catch basin and it goes into a manhole, rather than having two structures, we make them together. So, that has to be added. Okay, number forty-one was the groundwater separation. Yep. It's, it goes to the same thing, we left the old data on there and it just has to be changed. Oh, again, forty-two is a typo because of just naming some inlets, and forty-three, oh, um, again, again, it's just coordinating the, uh, the drainage plants. They were all done, they just, some of the labels were not, not done correctly. Okay, and then forty-four is just confirming how we arranged our time of concentration for the drainage, alright. But I thought, I thought you might be interested to know about, we added more landscaping for the neighbors, we changed the lighting system, that's what I thought.
So, yeah, so there, there are other changes that went into this.
Yes, that aren't addressed here, but, uh, I, in my cover letter, in the submission.
We talked about it.
Yeah, the first thing we did was, um, um, well, we widened the road, we changed some landscaping, um, so, it was landscaping in the right of way, we moved it outside the right of way, we, we added, you know, remember, this drops down, so we added landscaping all along here, uh, larger evergreen trees, and then along this area here, which should give you what, what here means, well, anyway, we, we added a bunch of laurel trees to act as a buffer, and then we put a, we had a couple other shade trees in, in there, so that was the buffering that the neighbor wanted, they also wanted, they were concerned about floodlights, so we changed the lighting system on the buildings to a, a down light, so this is a LED cutoff light, it shines down, I mean, they're forward throws, because the idea was that a light on the wall of one building will light clear across the driveway to the other building, and these lights are positioned, they'd be on motion sensors and be on, and we could set how long they'd be on, twenty minutes, thirty minutes, uh, so if someone pulls in to a spot, it's, it's at, if it's at night, the lights in this area will go on and they'll stay on for a certain amount of time until they dry out.
And it's in motion.
Yeah.
And I did walk that with Candy Thompson, and she was fine with everything that's there, she's... She's actually happy even with the original stuff that's there. So if we don't have to take any of that out, she's happy with what's there. If we take some with the landscape, but if we have to take out, we'll put back to that density. So she was, she was fine with that.
All right.
Can I see the cut sheet for the picture?
Yeah, this is, this is.
Just the picture is nothing.
It's a picture of, of what, yeah, okay. It's, it's just, it's just, sure, it goes up against the wall. All right, and as I mentioned, we added a fire hydrant up by the entrance gate. Okay, and we did clarify that all excavation will be done at phase one, because this is a two-phase system.
Right, now where's the first phase end again? Is it, great, there, that's what I thought, okay.
And the only, the, the remaining excavation is a hill.
Right, okay.
Board, have any other questions?
The only concern I have now is the road widening, because that was something that we had requested because of the narrowness of that road and this new business in there. Is there a way that we can get Highway to work with them to do some of this?
I think what, even if Highway works, it wouldn't still trigger that thing with DOT.
Sure, but I mean, it's a necessary process for this, this road.
But I mean, I don't know, like, what do you mean by Highway work with them?
Can Highway work with DOT to, or mask DOT to, to get the, the drainage, I mean, it is a, it's a town road. Um, you know, we want business in here, but the roads aren't adequate to support businesses that wanna go in there.
I don't even think they could make that call. That would be a board's select.
See, my feeling is, yeah, that's, that's, that's a town problem. It's, it's, it's not a layman's problem. I mean, we, we should be, we should be trying to support these businesses that come in, not, not hinder them. Let's fix up our infrastructure so that we can attract the right businesses and not.
At least when they're trying to do something helpful.
Exactly. If they're trying to do something helpful, not, not, you leave it all on them to, so.
Anything when you're going, I'd be on DOT, that's.
It's not against, we, we could talk to them. Again, uh, yeah, it's, it's not like we can put detention in that for this little strip. I don't know.
I mean, you're gonna just have to show what, what the extra runoff is and, and.
Yes. It's the.
And it's, it's, it's harder. It's just the.
Yeah, you can calculate what it's.
It's, it's, it's the hassle and paperwork to, to go through it, and, and I understand.
Yeah.
But it, I, I still think that road widening is necessary for this, this project.
But is, is there any way, and I'm not saying Mr. Nickel, would he want to do this, that he could send the water onto his property for that? Whatever it ends up being, if it's a thousand square feet, that, that thousand square feet damage runoff from that could be directed onto his property versus even going to catch basin, so.
I think if you, I mean, you got the. If you give more of that, yeah, you'd end up getting the whole road in there too. You could just put it in there, but you're gonna take the whole road, then you're gonna screw up whatever his calculus is.
But he's not required to, well, I'm not saying he won't get the water, but he's not required to address the whole road. He only has to address a portion of the road that applies to him. I understand the road. He might get the water from the whole road as a result of, yeah.
Yep, that, that the road knows.
Okay, I tell you, we'll, we'll make a call to the DOT and just see if this is gonna be a hassle.
Okay.
Maybe the small amount that, of the increase, maybe they'll say, yeah, we don't care. I think it might be that simple, yeah.
Well, that's what, we'll, we'll make a call, because.
If you do the calculations, then you'll know exactly how much, and like you said, maybe it's insignificant. Get it in writing though.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least an email.
At least an email.
Is that kind of the only?
It's the only issue I have.
And I, I can't.
Well, I mean, we have the other issues that are going on that, that still need to be addressed, but.
Yeah.
But that's one thing that we've talked about, that, that was kinda still left open, so, um, I think it's necessary.
So, I mean, I don't mind. I'll pave it if the board wants me to pave it, and I won't pave it if you don't want me to pave it. So whatever the board comes back to me with, or we come up with on a later date, I'll address that either way.
Okay.
Okay?
So what I'm saying is, let's make an effort to work on the DOT. Let's see how difficult they're gonna be. If it's an easy shot, and they've got no problem with it, let's pave it and go ahead.
Okay.
Let's just take it.
That would be the preferences.
I can talk to our Highway supervisor. Maybe he knows the right people to talk to to see.
Yeah, maybe he.
Exactly.
How big a deal this actual may be.
Oh, that would probably be helpful.
Yeah, because he's, I'm sure he's been done before, so.
With Jared.
Yeah, I'll talk to Jared and see what he might be able to do to expedite or maybe make it.
Yeah, just at least to call someone and.
I mean, does the town have to do that every time they widen a road a little bit?
Yeah.
They have to reach out to DOT?
It goes on to the, which one here?
Anything that's in the state road or right of way, we have to go through DOT.
Okay.
They're just going through that on Route twenty now. They have another one.
Yeah.
Surprise.
For, um, plumbing?
No.
Oh, for, oh.
So does planning board kinda like everything that they say? Are, are you happy with everything?
No.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think we're, we're going in the right direction. I don't think that's, that's, that's gonna be a too much of a problem as long as everything's addressed and, you know.
Right.
We do, do diligence to get.
But now, and just to ask, uh, dealing with DOT might take a while. You might sit on people's desks for the summer because they're going on vacation and so on so, I mean, is there a way that we?
If you don't try, we don't know. Let's.
No, no, I don't mind trying. I just don't wanna hold up my plan based on that. I would like to have it contingent. If DOT says, yes, you can, then I admit to, to pave that. I don't have a problem. If DOT says, no, you can't, then, you know what I mean, so I'd like to ask, you know, and I don't know if this is even, that, you know, I could get a passion.
I think it's premature.
Yep, okay.
But I think if you showed due diligence, that you went through the process to, to get the information to them and, and get the information back, then I, I think that's, that's a potential.
Okay, yeah.
So for our next meeting, September fourth?
Yes.
Do we have space open on, are they already swalled for a time?
Yeah.
It's, is that enough time?
It's a matter of, uh, just demanding the plan per grade review, which is all minor, so.
September fourth?
Yeah, 'cause you. Uh, yeah, they're.
That's the day after Labor Day, or two days after Labor Day.
Right.
Labor Day's on the Monday. This would be the Wednesday.
Yeah, I guess the, the thing is, um, yeah, I, I will submit plans, and I'll get the comment the day before they hear them.
Don't.
We'll, we can schedule it, but then, just no sense showing up if there's a couple little items, right? So that's what I wanna.
This comment isn't really a grade comment, so you won't be waiting for that. We'll be addressing this.
Okay, no, no, that, but I'm just saying.
We'll all the, the grade comments in here that.
Would they be?
I hope he's gonna incorporate them into a revised plan.
Right, so we're gonna go do test pits and, and, and that information, because what I'm saying is, we'll comply with all those comments?
Yeah, yes.
We, we, we intend to, and, and sometimes you can get approval subject to, you know, you know, as a condition of the approval.
Yep.
So can we tentatively put you on the agenda for that fourth, or you feel that's rushing you?
Well, we're gonna do test pits, so there's a week, and then a week to get the data, and then update the, you know, so, uh, that's.
All right, so we'll, we'll put you on there if, if things push out and we need to push out again.
Then we'll be eighteen.
Okay, then you can move it to the next one.
We can bump you to the next.
Next one would be the eighteen.
You're actually on, on for probably both of them already, so.
I mean, I, I believe we have to the board, of course, but I don't know, you know, a condition on test pits isn't gonna, would that be considered a holdup on the approval?
No, we've done, we've done them after the fact.
Well, that's what I was kind of implying, because most of this stuff is minor in nature.
Right.
You know, there's, there's a list of them, because again, we rushed to get it done.
Mm-hmm.
Everyone's on vacation. My MEP department is almost all out this, 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 the next couple of weeks.
I think the biggest issue is to get the, the issue with the road request.
Okay.
Just get it started and.
There's nowhere to stand.
Okay, so the DOT is the most important, okay?
Yeah.
I wanna make a motion to continue, I wanna hear from them.
Any, any comments from the public on this one? Okay.
Okay, did, okay, I just wanna make sure that, that we were addressing their concerns, you know?
Yep, correct. Yep.
Uh, make a motion to continue this to September fourth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll call them up.
Thank you.
Yep.
Saving two as a cop here, so. Time to get some tone around here.
Yeah.
Been waiting all week.
Will be Mason? Will Mason, that's good one?
No, they have a contract for the hallway, so they have to, they cannot pay to capture someone's.
And don't they have like twenty-four hours to do it, or, no? They can come whenever they want?
I guess so.
Yes, so.
It's not a good contract.
Yeah, well, Reese was good.
All right, seven twenty, public hearing continuing for Charlton Realty Company LLC's site plan application at two ninety-nine Sturbridge Road. How you guys doing? All right, very good.
Anyone here for this?
Okay, um, I also have some bullet points on this application as well, because of the lack of. In the grade engineering report, you have one area where they're concerned of, uh, showing the twenty-foot buffer, which I think has been discussed at the last meeting, about twenty feet in, the fact that it's facing twenty, and how effective putting a buffer there would be. Um, the board will have to address that there. Also need a variance for the parking within fifty feet of the road, which they are scheduled to go to a ZBA meeting for variance application on August twenty-eighth, so that is being addressed. There's a lot of concern over needing mass DOT approval for this project, because they're, one, adding a driveway. More importantly, they're, they're, um, proposing a pull-over area for a truck on the side of Route twenty.
Yep.
Ten-foot wide area, which is, uh, not a good idea, particularly if it's the wintertime, and now there's gonna be a snowbank there. I mean, if it hits cloud, well, that's after the snowstorm, and the truck came on me time, create a very hazardous situation.
Can I clarify a couple of things on that comment? That was the one that, you know, uh, stuck out to me as, you know, we probably need to talk about.
Okay.
You want me to wait or you want me to?
Um, and then, no, the, the only other issue's ahead, which I think was minor in detail, is they had a casting for the manhole or sweet mass DOT approval, which, you know, where that, so that, that's a requirement that the mass DOT requires, so.
Well, the, the, it's a, it's a town, uh, the, none of the manholes or catch basins are on, are in the right of way. So it's more, um.
The engineers' requirement.
Right.
For the town standard to meet mass DOT standard.
Yes.
Okay.
So, you know, it's more, you know, we're gonna let the contractor choose, uh, the make and model of the frame and cover. Uh, but we're gonna renew it and make sure it meets the mass DOT standards.
Okay.
So it's nothing that mass DOT will comment on in the access permit.
Okay.
All right, so, so, um, like, is ZBA coming up for twenty-seven?
Yes.
Correct.
Then, so the two big things is, one, the pull-over.
There's a pull-over and then the addition of a driveway.
Area, and then. In the right of way. Yeah, and then the curb, and then the, and then how wide the curb cut is.
On state road. Yeah.
So the, 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 so for the ZBA?
Yeah.
Is specific to, uh, the parking within fifty feet of the right of way?
Yep.
Um, I think that's, that's the only, uh, item on their agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the other two are, are separate from the ZBA, just to clarify that.
Correct.
So I think, you know, the, the, the pull-over area, I, I just wanna address that, a couple of things. The width of the pull-off, that's, it's a little misleading. Um, put the plan up here. There's one area, which, just can see that. We identified the, the dimensional line here and a leader where the pull-off area is. You know, the main pull-off area would be in front of this gate. We think there's, there's adequate space here for a single truck, uh, to get in front of this. The, the ten-foot width is between the landscaped area and the edge of pavement here. So it really, it, it's just one area here that is tight, um, up against the landscaping, which, you know, if they needed to, they could drive over the landscaping, but, um, you know, we think there's sufficient space here to, to put one truck, which, you know, this is gonna be very rare, uh, you know, and it's, it's also gonna be off-hours, could be the middle of the night. So, you know, and I, I think we talked about this at previous meetings, and I thought the planning board was, was okay with that. Just given the, uh, you know, how infrequent the, the traffic would be, or the, you know, the scenario would come up.
I don't think anybody.
You know, I understand that.
I don't think anybody thought it was gonna be a truck falling off and waiting on the side of Route twenty.
Just to unlock the gate if they need to.
The owner had proposed electronic gates, so that that would not have to be the case. I would highly suggest that. I just do not see that you creating a very dangerous situation. At night is actually a worse situation for people that are unfamiliar with the road.
Sir. I'm Craig Ryan, I'm the owner of the property. We had this conversation with the planning board, and, uh, once we got through explaining it, they were, they were pretty receptive to what we were trying to do, because at first they came up with the forty-foot length of the opening for the, for the gates, which is what we have now. And they said, no, you can make them a little smaller, and we said that we really can't, because of the fact that when we pull off where we, where we wanna pull off, if we need to pull off, because the gates aren't gonna be closed all the time. I mean, we're not a Fort Knox or something like that, where somebody's gonna get in and steal something. But there's, there's one gate that is actually designed so that the truck going eastbound can come off, and it just slopes and goes down into the backyard. The one that's coming westbound, ditto on the next gate up, where you go in and you can come around and come down into the backyard that way. But where, where we wanna set this thing up, where the, where the trucks can pull over if they have to, there's room like almost three trucks across, where you can park those trucks in there and still have plenty of room on the highway. But what's happening is, they're taking this one space where the gate is, it's about ten feet, we're not gonna be parked up there. If a truck should have to come in and should have to stop, he's gonna stop back here and take care of his business. But like you, you had said earlier, I have no problem with putting an electric gate on it. My thing is, is that I'm not gonna need an electric gate on every single gate. I can do the one going eastbound and the one going westbound. But the other two gates are gonna be like normal business hours type of thing. We open the gates up, and we close it by night time, because that would be the storage lots, if we have to get into the storage of vehicles in emergency situations. So the forty-foot gate really gives us the ability to pull a tractor-trailer in there. We don't have to go out into the highway lanes. Once we're over, we're done.
So would, would putting the electronic gates in, a- as we talked about, put this issue to rest?
No, I think mass DOT is gonna deny this, to be honest with you. I, I think if you didn't get back here, because this is gonna change as a result of mass DOT. There is no one, the professionals I've discussed, think that mass DOT is ever going to approve of putting an additional driveway, and then putting a parking area on a shoulder on a fifty mile an hour road.
Oh, it's not a parking area, that's not.
Well, I mean, some, essentially, somebody's pulling over a vehicle and stopping and getting out. That truck's parked for a few minutes. I mean, assume it's, that's all it takes for a potential activity.
Yeah. That's the, that's the.
Move closer than I can see. Yep.
Now, I'm upside down, so I'm pretty.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's basically this, this area here. Um, there's also, I, I think.
Pull, I thought the pull-up was before this gate, not for this gate. This is, this is the eastbound gate? This is the westbound gate? Is that?
Yeah. Well, the other thing is, this, this is, you know, drawn is landscaped here, but it's really, it's kinda dirt, you know, not. So the other thing, you know, we could do is, and, and I think, you know, uh, right now, a vehicle could pull onto this, this area here and open this gate. Um, we could widen that a little bit.
So, so that's the question. So if you've got a westbound truck, and those gates are closed, what does he do? Does he stop in the middle of the road?
No. That's not what we're intending. Uh, I think he would pull off into this, into this area.
Okay.
Heading the wrong way.
And then.
He would have to back up on the south road.
No, that wouldn't be a situation at all. No, number one, there would never be a situation where we're gonna have a westbound truck coming in that the gates are gonna be closed, because we're gonna have somebody, if that truck's going in there, there's gonna be somebody there.
Be possible to move the gates further into your property? Be possible to move the gates further into your property without, so they could come and get off of Route twenty, then if they had to get out and open the gate and then get in? This, this is, is, is this the driveway going down?
Like I said, we're gonna put an electronic gate in there. There're gonna be our trucks going in and out and those trucks are gonna have transmitters on it right on the front bumper, just like a toll road. So when the truck gets within a thousand feet of that gate, it's gonna open. He pushes the button either eastbound or westbound and that particular gate's gonna open.
So why would a truck ever need to pull over?
I'm concerned about the eastbound. I'm concerned about the eastbound with the, uh, the thing. It's not gonna open before they get up there and I'm afraid that they're gonna have to, have to pull over for the response time for that to open to make a swing.
Yeah, it has to open pretty quick. I mean, I don't have the, the
Right.
the, the setup as far as the gates go, how fast they go and how many seconds it's gonna take to open it. We could certainly get that information. We could also increase the size of the motor and increase the size of the gears so we can make that gate move pretty fast. I mean, that's not really, you know, a problem.
I mean, regardless of what the town says, that's in the state right of way, so mass DOT has to approve it.
But like I told you, it's, we're gonna have somebody there if there's somebody going in there.
But you just said, well, the trucks will be showing up in the middle, like this is a twenty-four hour day operation?
No, the twenty-four hour day operation. But if somebody has a problem with their truck, they're coming in there to have it fixed.
But you said that the trucks that would be pulling over would be coming in primarily at night. That's what was stated earlier.
Well, not primarily, but
But they're coming in to pick up. No, okay, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, this is, this is, we don't transfer any freight at all there. If a fellow pulls into our lot at night time, it's because he's having a problem, he's got an issue with his truck, maybe a flat tire, maybe a light out, something like that, his heater doesn't work, he's gonna pull in down back.
And he's done that.
We're gonna take care of his issue.
Spottail. I mean, he's not having a trailer
Oh, he may have a trailer, absolutely, yeah.
He will.
Yeah. He could have a trailer.
Okay.
Right? Ninety-nine percent of our trucks move with no trailers on through that tunnel. We haul all the medical imaging equipment to hospitals and the trailers are about two and a half, three million dollars apiece.
Right.
We'll move it from a hospital in East, Eastham to a hospital in Pittsfield, or we'll take one from Springfield and take it to Buffalo, New York. You know what I mean? We move them all over the, the whole Northeast. And we never bring the trailers back to this facility. They're always going from one hospital or one medical facility to the next one.
Yeah.
That's correct, yeah, they keep moving around.
But if all your trucks had transmitters in them, why would they need to get, be pulled over? Are you expecting to bring in trucks of other people to do repairs?
No, we could bring in it, we could bring in one of our trucks.
No, I'm, what I'm asking is, do you want any other trucks entering this property beside yours?
Absolutely. What happens if one of my trucks breaks down? Let's go back to that scenario. It'll be on the back of a wreck now. I'm not gonna be, I'm gonna ask everybody
It is an issue with the pull-over.
Yes.
Well, the pull, the pull-over, like I said, is not gonna be a big issue. You could talk
A very big issue.
Twenty's a big issue and this is even less of this, especially if it happens in the middle of the snowstorm. So they're building up a big snowbank on the side. And if it's not getting plowed, if it happens in the middle of the night, as most of the plowing does, that snowbank's gonna be there, a truck's gonna show up, and now where's he gonna go?
And we already have our most snowy moveable equipment.
So there's a potential for issue, I think is what we're discussing. There's a, there's a potential for an issue. It needs DOT approval.
And I get that, and we've already filed permits. I'm very familiar with the people at DOT, have worked with them on a personate basis for thirty-five years.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned about that turning lane, I'm concerned about westbound trucks having to stop to get in there to open a gate, gate's not working, it's a tow truck. It, it seems like a risky proposal in that location around that corner. If DOT is okay with it, then I'm not sure my concern's valid.
I'm not sure that DOT knows that those gates will be closed and have to be opened for the truck to enter the property. That's the issue. It depends on how much information they're actually receiving. Just having the property there and they assume the gates are open, they're gonna say, well, no big deal, the truck can pull right in, but if the gates closed and the DOT isn't aware of that, they might
But, I mean, does your security have to be that far out by the street? Can we, can, can we move the gates? Can the gates be in, in here at the top of the hill if this still up a problem?
How far back would you wanna go from there now?
So that they get completely into your, into your lot?
Seven foot truck.
That's right.
Yep. Where was the, where's the access down, I'm sorry, so this is the gravel drive?
You know, perpendicular oriented, perpendicular to the road, then the answer is no.
So this is, this is the drive that they're coming down to access the back?
Well, there's, so there's a drive here that
Yep.
they can access the back here.
If they come in this way, they
Yep, if they're coming westbound, they would come in this entrance.
Yep.
If they're coming eastbound.
Then where would they go from here? Down over here, or is there, there's no other access down around this way, right?
This is the road.
This, oh, this is a road.
Yep, so there's a complete loop here.
Okay, okay.
This will be the westbound entrance. This will be the eastbound entrance, so that they don't have to stop, they can go right in.
So, if we put a gate here and a gate here, wouldn't that solve the problem? Then they could get completely into this lot. Stop at this gate, but they're in your yard.
Right, but, so then, so then this whole space is not gated off.
Isn't the DOT gonna be the, the final say on what goes on with the gates?
Not necessarily.
So, uh, what, is there other truck storage up here? Is this why you need this gated, or is this?
We may have trailers up there.
Okay. I was under the impression that all the storage and, and trucks would be back down in
So now trailers will be parked within the fifty-foot area that
Okay, okay, truck storage, yeah, okay.
I don't think that was the original intent, there was gonna be vehicles, not trailers parked up by the road.
Well, that was, in this area here was, was the vehicle storage.
Well, that, I'm, but I'm talking about his truck, not the trailers.
No, no, what I'm saying is, let's say there's a snowstorm. All right, and we've got fifteen tractor-trailers that are smashed up, jackknifed, they're all over the highway.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and now we gotta give them, get them in off the highway. I, I don't care where we take them. We're not worried about zoning and all of that stuff. We wanna get them off the highway so the road is safe. And once the snow is over, we can deal with this stuff and get it out of there as quickly as possible. But I mean, we get calls from everywhere to get this stuff off the road. It's like I said, we deal with mass highway every single day. Accidents? I've been doing it for thirty-five years in this area. Nobody can tell you anymore about accidents on the side of the road than me.
But I thought the only storage area for accident vehicles was the skated area. Now you're saying you're going to use the other areas as well?
What I'm saying is, in an emergency, I'm gonna put them anywhere I can get them off the highway where the, where the motoring public is safe until the snow is over and I can get them out of there. Because they may not be staying. It might be a load of, it might be a load of brickster, a load of sheetrock or a tank of load of milk or a load of gasoline. I don't know what it's gonna be. We never know. But it's not gonna stay there. I mean, it's not, it's not what pocketing you up.
The primary intent for this, for this area is a pass-through and it's, you know, it's, it's a potential area for, you know, storage of equipment or, uh...
Well, equipment and vehicles are two different things, so when you say equipment, I will get in a whole different light than you need vehicles.
Right. I think we're, you know, we're leaving it open for flexibility.
But the parking is for parking of vehicles that you'd be getting a variance for. That's my concern.
Right.
It's not parking of equipment. I think that even the spelling board, they would look at it a different light. If you had a bunch of tractors, not truck tractors, but tractor trucks
Tractor tractors.
parked up by the road, they would look at it a whole different light than they would trucks.
Heavy equipment type stuff.
Exactly.
Right.
Right.
Well, I think the intent is not to have trucks lined up in this area.
Well, as, when you say equipment, that's, that's a very broad term and leaves the lot open to interpretation.
Hey, I would say the, the right thing would be there would be motor vehicles of any shape kind of description. Whatever comes down the road and gets in trouble, it's gotta get off the road. Could be an excavator, it could be an earth mover, it could be a
No, I completely understand that, but I, the last meeting, you never implied that year was gonna be, for lack of a term, better term, accident victims. That was gonna be parking of your vehicles. Now it's turning into an area for accident victims, which is not a store, car store here. It's gonna be right up against the road. And you even stated at the last meeting, I'm gonna stand trailers will have, um, things in and they have to move, but the trucks still might stay. Now you have all these smashed up trucks sitting up by the road.
Correct, but I can move them into the yellow lot when that's over. What I'm talking about is in the snowstorm, I gotta put them somewhere.
That lot's not that big when you start loading up with accident victim cars and trucks in particular. And you said yourself that they might stay there for a year with insurance.
Well, that's, that's not the intent of this, this area.
It sounded like it is at this point.
It is not. It, I think what Mr. Moran is talking about is during a, you know, a, an emergency.
I understand an emergency, but it sounds like it might end up being a little more long-term than emergency. Yes, the trailer might be picked up and taken off, but the truck probably not.
Is there a requirement for it to be, to be fenced through, to be bonded or?
That's the lot that we were talking about for the storage of motor
See if there's something
Which, which
Well, why the gates way out here to incorporate that, who parked a lot, is there?
Yeah, I think it's the, it's
What happens when that lot is
Security and access permit.
Never had a lot of
Unauthorized access.
They move in, they move out, the insurance companies come in, do their thing. They wanna get them out of there.
I'm concerned about the gates without a proper staging area on your property is what concerns me. I'm, I'm worried about trucks coming westbound here, stopping, can't get through that gate, parking in the middle of Route twenty and causing, impeding flow traffic.
They can't stop in the middle of Route twenty, number one, it's against the law. Second thing is, as I've said a couple times tonight, nobody will be coming to that property without somebody being there with the gates open. They're not gonna be in there. They're coming there for
With no transponders.
So I, I
What if a truck truck's towing one in in the middle of the night?
We're gonna get a call. We're gonna get a call, well, we're not gonna be, we're gonna get a call because if it's one of our tractors is broken, it's going in the garage.
But you just said like
What if you're towing something?
What if it's a truck off the pipe that, there's a, say a multi-car accident, there's a couple of trailer trucks on the pipe?
Correct.
That truck comes down, bringing, towing a truck from Auburn, and now they get a call into your site.
We're already gonna get the call. The gates are gonna be open.
So why do you need the pull-over area then?
I don't need it. I don't need it. It's better to have an emergency spot than nothing at all. But I don't need it. And what's happening up there now, if you get up at two, three o'clock in the morning and you go over by Sims Racquetball Club?
Yeah.
Or you go right in this piece of property that we're talking about, what's happening with the truck drivers now is they have these electronic logging devices in the gaps. That will let them run so many hours. After that, so many hours, if they go one minute over, now they start getting fined by the federal government. All right, so what happens is wherever they are, whenever that clock strikes one, they gotta be stopped right there and that motor has to be shut down. And if they don't, they start getting fined. So what happens is, any place they can find to pull over. That's the biggest problem now that everybody's having on these highways, is they'll pull over and if you go up to Sims, you'll see the whole dirt down on the side of the road where they pull in there, you'll see them sitting there two, three, four in the morning. They'll sit there for ten hours. At the same stage we're talking about.
But a police can come along there and tell them to move.
Can't move, they have to tow.
Well, then they'll get towed, okay?
If they're repeating the highway, they'll get
Right. And what's happening on another person's property, if they're off the road and on that private property, that could cause a big problem too.
I'm just trying to tell you what they're doing.
Right, I totally understand. But you have New England Truck Stop not far from there either. I mean, come on, you have a truck stop there.
Randy, do we need the traffic engineer to look at this? Discuss whether, is that what we need?
I, I don't know. I think we need some sort of input on this because this is, could be a significant issue and be a treehouse situation. We don't wanna create
Well, I think treehouse was a lot of traffic coming at, all at the same time. I mean, we're talking about a very unlikely scenario.
But you're talking about bigger vehicles also.
A bit, one, most likely one vehicle.
It only changed once to say, why did Charlton Planning Board approve this?
So, I, I think
We've heard that We have heard that frequently.
But we're, we're saying we're supplying this pull-off area in the, for the unlikely event that there is one truck that needs to stop in there.
Is, is, uh, wha- what do you think?
Actually, well, DOT has to look at it no matter what, right?
I would really recommend that we wait to hear from DOT because they might have a, play a big role in what is allowed to be done.
Right, yeah. Right. So, that's what I'd say. You don't know, DOT.
Can you include us in the conver, in the, in the, in the correspondence with, with DOT?
Correspondence.
Catch them?
Yeah.
Now, you said you guys already started that applic, that process, did you?
Yep.
It's already done.
It's been submitted, yeah.
It's been submitted, they haven't gotten back yet.
No, we haven't heard from them. We, we can follow them up and try to actually go on forward.
Can you forward us the con, can you forward any of the cor, the correspondence that you had with them?
Uh, the application.
I wanna make sure that they understand the, the, the whole picture.
The use.
Yeah, I'll have to, it's been a little while since we submitted that, so I can, I'll have to look, see what we saw, so, but, uh, yeah.
I'll check on it. Yeah.
Good.
All right, so
We can do that. So, so we're talking about this, there's no, we, because we, when we came in tonight, we were thinking approval contingent upon DOT correspondence.
I think this is too much of a potential safety issue that we really need to hear from the mass DOT before the planning board makes a decision on the application.
Yeah, I'm not ready to make a decision on this to approve it, no.
Do you have the same way, Dan?
Is everything else, I know we've been focused on this, so are we satisfied with everything?
Pretty much.
Yeah, all the other details are relatively minor, but so
Yes, I'll need
Good, okay.
It's, it's a safety
Yeah, it looks like, you know, other than this, you know, the ZBA, um,
On the twenty-seventh.
Item, right, the ZBA item, but everything else besides this one.
But I, yeah, I mean, if we were to prove it and it wasn't finished with the ZBA, we'd make a condition as well.
Right, and, and, yeah, yeah.
Say, oh, you're gonna wait another
And then on the offering and on the, um, existing gates, because they're pre-existing, that would have, you're just gonna address that with a waiver that's ever already there.
Right, right, so the, the waiver needs to be approved.
Right, so they, they won't be any issue either.
Okay. Yep, okay, so, so the one, one thing is the, to get DOT, um, approval for this or correspondence. Everything else is good.
Any comment from the public on this one? Who have motion to approve this, they can, oh, sorry, to continue.
I make a motion to continue since September fourth.
We'll get something back by then, probably won't have DOT approval by then, but maybe you'll get something back from them, I'm saying, they're still considering.
If you don't have anything, just give us a call and we'll
We'll bump into the next one.
Right, continue to the next one. If you're not ready. If you're ready, fine, come on in.
Yeah, but everything else we've, we've done so far.
Yeah, you said, right.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's the only outstanding issue.
Yeah, yeah, I think we So I'll second that.
And even then, I mean, you haven't bothered to make the note about the manhole anyway, have I had you, the casting?
Um, what do you mean?
Because, I mean, I don't expect you to amend the plans just to show that.
No, no, we, we didn't intend to, we
Right, so we make that
I think, you know, basically it was, it was addressed as, uh, let me see, it was, I think it was actually acknowledged, um, by Graves. Yeah, it says acknowledge the engineer's response of the contractor's chosen casting will be reviewed by the engineer.
So that we definitely construct the case?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, because I have no reason to amend the plans for
Yeah.
One little item like that, so
Okay.
All right, thank you guys very much.
Appreciate it. One more question, your, your application with DOT, you did state that those are gated.
I, I believe so, it's right on the plan.
Okay, you have
Oh, you mean, okay.
Yeah. We have the plan.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible that we
Take something out of order? I mean, because we have a, a simple article and they have the proper insurance
Yeah.
Something that could resolve very quickly.
Something proper, fine.
Uh, we have the, uh, capture sixty-one B release request for a property at, um, at thirty-nine, lot thirty-nine, uh, block four.
Just do one thing real quick before you
Do whatever you want.
And, uh, this property is actually sixty-one B, which was part of recreational open
Yes, correct.
It does still require the, uh, acknowledgement of the full planning board to take action of what they have no interest in purchasing it, um, and it will then go to the, uh, board of selection at their next global meeting, so I would like that the, the planning board, they could act on this. It is sixty-one B, but it still requires acting prior to the plan.
It, it still requires a recommendation for us whether
Right, do not purchase or
Make a motion that we recommend not to purchase this lot in coming
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's all.
Great, thank you, that's it.
All right, either
The next one, Axie's up. How do you serve each road? Oh, yes, uh, we have the, uh, we'll have to read the
Here, we're on the service road. Here, we're not in Cheltenham Street Road, you.
All right.
Yep.
Uh, we're going to, when a conference with sections two hundred dash seven point one, two hundred dash seven point two, the Charlton building, by the way, Charlton building, we will hold the public hearing on Wednesday, August fourteenth. Two thousand nineteen at seven thirty P M. in the planning board office in the George C. McKinsey Building, thirty-seven inch, Charlton now, so the application of the oldest land management LLC. One hundred Sturbridge Road, Charlton now, on five oh seven, for site plan approved to construct five thousand two hundred thirty-five square foot, addition to an existing building, a hundred Sturbridge Road, the property contains approximately four point two four acres, the property is located on north side of Sturbridge Road. Which is Route twenty, the property ID is the census map, map thirty, block D, property five point three, in the zone industrial general. Copy of the site plan application are available for inspection at the planning board office and town clerk's office during regular business hours, any person interested or wish to be heard should appear at a time close designated. All right.
Hi, uh, Jason DuBois from DC Engineering. Property, a hundred Sturbridge Road, owned by oldest land management, Ralph Nichols is the owner of the property. I'm sure you're all familiar with the site, a hundred Sturbridge Road, uh, so this is the building that's closest to Route twenty, um, on the westwardly side of the site, there is another building up here. So this building here, it's a hundred and twenty by one hundred, it's twelve thousand square feet, um, the proposal is to add an additional fifty by ninety-nine addition in the back here. Uh, with a loading dock and then a nineteen by fifteen area here that would have an overhead garage door. Current parking on the site is, there's, there's spaces along the front of the building, along the side here, and some spaces in the back. With the additional square footage of the building, we did add another seven spaces here and one more space here to meet the additional parking requirement. The park, uh, the traffic flow of the site is gonna remain the same. There's some overhead doors that you can see on the building here, along the side, along the side, as well as a few man doors existing there now here, uh, two in the front of the building. We are proposing one overhead door in the back, a man door here, uh, we are adding a floor drain in the building, so we have an oil water, uh, holding tank at the back. No additional impervious to this site, it's all paved now, so the building will be sitting on existing paved surfaces. It's basically the project that the use is remaining the same.
Same, yep.
The machine, machine shop use.
Trying to keep the customer. Yep, machine shop.
We did submit this a few weeks back, you know, went to Graves, Graves had some minor comments that he issued last week, uh, we get those back to him Monday, and he again sent comments back today. Pretty much all acknowledged, except he had, still had one item regarding the handicap spacing. It was more of a grading, grading thing here, we have spot grades here and the handicap accessibility is, is over the two percent, so. But again, that's been like that for a long time, so I don't know, fifteen years or so, you know, what the board's view is on that, but.
Yeah.
Well, this theory, uh, what's the time on NADA, as far as that goes?
Not sure.
For existing.
Can you be grandfathered?
Yeah, you don't have to address it, that's good.
I think when you're adding new though, that's when it triggers, you have to address with a new section, you know?
Yeah, my big difference, ah, okay, separate, all right, okay, gotcha, all right, verification.
I mean, it is pretty flat, I mean, when Jay brought it to my attention, I had to go out there and actually look at it.
Yeah.
I don't even know if we're over it, you know, because I didn't really take a, a measure, because it, it is right there, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
The only thing that I said to Jay is if we needed to pour some concrete in the backside of the building and put a couple handicap, uh, parking there.
Yeah.
Okay, because no customers go to this building, this.
That's what I was gonna say, there's no retail out of the building.
No.
It's just employees.
No, just employees, and then they, this building ships to like Saint Pierre Chain and, and, and their warehouses out in Texas. Because they make all the big block and tackles for all the oil refineries and cranes and all that kind of stuff, so to keep this company in Charlton. They came to me and said, hey, we need an additional five thousand square feet, or we gotta look for a different industrial park or go back to Worcester where they originally came from. Um, because they get these contracts, so, um, that building's gonna house a, a crane that goes back and forth. That allows them to pick up these things and move it back and around.
Bridge crane.
Yeah, bridge crane that goes left, right, up, down, all over the place, so, um.
This space here, this is the existing space that's been there, this is the one we added just since it was already next to some striping. Um, and we could absolutely take this space and just put it up here next to this man door location, propose man door.
Said all you need is one, one space?
While the, the parking requirements turn to two.
Sure, I could put.
But there was, there was one that we can add the additional one in the back.
If you want to.
And I can make flat.
I think if you could move, I think, I'm, I'm sure that would satisfy the building's Converse officer as well, if you read, if you did that in the back.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, that close parts in it to a main door.
Yeah, it's a door, it's a door going right here, and there's nothing back here, so we can just put that one additional space with a loading dock.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's, area's gonna have to be slightly recreated anyway once the building's put in, so.
Yep.
You can just pour concrete back right there.
Yeah. Yep.
So we'll guarantee that we'll put two.
Just one back there.
Oh, just one back there.
Well, the existing one can stay, you think, or?
Well.
It's pre-existing.
Well, the thing is, is with the new addition, what are you required to have?
Just one.
Just one?
Yeah.
One for the new addition.
Well, that's how you, you put one back there so that you have it.
Yeah.
And then leave the existing ones in the front.
Correct, yeah, don't touch the front.
Yeah, because I mean, they're pretty flat as it is, it is flat, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When you do, yeah.
Correct.
You get the level in there.
You wouldn't, when I, when Graves first sent the comment, I said, oh, that'll be no problem with this dead flat. But then we show it and it's like.
Push a basketball to your throat.
You know, I guess two percent really is as flat as the table, which is.
Yeah.
The one other item they're asking for, which, uh, is a landscaping waiver, due to the fact that this is on the back of an existing industrial building in the middle of a completely impervious area, because it's all paved.
Well, there's a lot of landscaping in the front here and there's landscaping in these areas.
So, right, but for the additional of any new land, landscaping for this building addition really won't serve any purpose for offering or aesthetics or anything.
Provides a great start around for treehouse too, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's probably a sore subject. I, I don't see.
Hey, I was.
I don't see a need for additional, I don't see any additional landscaping.
Right.
All right, so we need to do, uh, vote on the waiver first, the landscaping.
Yes.
So we have a motion for the, uh.
To, 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 to make the landscaping.
So we'll.
Create the.
Waiver, you rent the waiver.
Make a, make a way for landscaping.
Make a motion to grant the waiver for the landscaping.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, and I think if you add that, like you said, if you add that, and again to the back.
Yeah, all right.
You, should we put that in the condition or are they disagreeing to do it, does it?
I, I.
Put it in as a condition.
Since it's not on the, the plans, I think put it in as.
And Jay can submit another set of plans with it showing back there. Might move a little bit depending on what we have to meet for grades out the back, but we'll definitely have one out the back.
Do we have the letter from Graves?
I have it right here.
The latest?
Yeah, this is Octo, August twelve.
Yeah, there was one today.
So is there something that?
Always one today.
This morning.
From Graves.
Are there any other comments or has he acknowledged everything and, well, that was, that was the only thing?
Yeah.
That was the one today, right, the one that's.
Wow.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the one from today.
Oh, I mean, one, one, it's been in date with today.
Yeah, August.
Good, good.
Yeah.
Um, the facade.
Same.
Same, it's gonna match.
Yeah.
Yep, perfect. Same company building it.
Yeah. So those were the only, only comments he had, everything else was acknowledged.
Yeah, at his point, I think it would just be the moving the hand, the handicap spot as a condition and also pre-construction review.
Yeah.
Right.
Before we get the notice to proceed.
Good.
Okay.
Who the bulk still deserve full kind of.
Okay.
Yeah, this is in the front of that slate.
Yeah, like.
Okay.
Do you have a, uh, motion of closed talk here?
I move that we have motion of closed public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to. Prove the site up.
I'll make a. Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the, the conditions that we stated for, for the handicap lot, um, the waivers that were previously discussed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, we're ready, will you guys sign that today?
Uh, yeah, we're planning on.
Check out with you?
Going away.
Um, I, I hope you can have Kathy Neal come in and grab it from here, I think, the attorney.
Yeah, that, that was the A and R, that's some I L R, so we just, we're kind of called up, or members to sign.
We, we already approved it, right?
Right, we already approved it, he just.
All right.
Yeah, I can just come back or I'll just have the attorney pick it up when I work.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you. Right there. We got for, uh, extension, all right. The planning board, rep, rep, we'd like to extend the approved subdivision for one year, thank you, Ron Goff, yeah, this is his subdivision on, uh, for the condos on, uh, City Depot.
Oh.
All right, I guess he's actually actively, he's a buyer for the property, I don't know if that's.
Yep.
This is, this is the, the City Depot, the duplexes.
The condos. City Depot, city, correct.
That's the prop.
The duplexes, the eight, the eight lots duplexes, okay, it confused me when it says off of Jay Davis, because the entrance is not off of Jay Davis.
Exactly.
Right.
Right.
Can we correct that to be off of City Depot or, or, I don't know what the paperwork says. But I, he doesn't have access on Jay Davis.
Correct, it's strictly off of, uh.
Strictly off of City Depot, just wanted to make sure that that hadn't changed any.
Yep, no, they haven't.
Okay. Is that?
All right, this will be getting.
Said you didn't hear?
The extension need to, uh, August twenty-eighth of twenty twenty.
Make motion, we, uh, extended it for August eighth, twenty twenty?
Seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
August one, eight?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty.
I would be, press a note.
You want to do the term change? Yeah.
Yeah, I actually have two more items that weren't on the agenda.
Okay, absolutely.
The first one is Patty doesn't know how to take a vacation.
I know. She's already said, I catch her three, three times.
I think she's talked to me every day, you say, you don't know what a vacation is, you know?
One day it rained, so she had an excuse.
Yeah, well, that's still not an excuse, because it rained and I didn't work and I was on vacation.
But, uh, the first thing she asked me is to contact, write a letter to the, our local representatives and ask for them to call the, uh, sighting board. In support of the planning board requesting the extension for the planning board intervenors of the, uh, LNG application.
Yep, yep, yep.
So I wrote these letters today and I just wanted the board members to look at and make sure they're okay with them before I actually mailed them out.
Good.
So the three, two representatives, one senator.
All the same, just to.
Yeah, it's the same letter, I just.
So Mr. Frost, Mr. Durant, and Ms. Goldie.
Basically asking, you know, give a brief explanation of what we're doing and asking for their, them to contact them for their support.
How did it go Monday, Randy, I wouldn't.
Uh, the, oh, I, yeah, actually, I'll give everybody a brief update because, um, the, uh, board of selectmen has authorized funding for counsel and, um, consultants. For the LNG committee, which is, um.
Are we all the same?
Yeah, this is the start, yeah.
This is.
Well, this is for that.
For the, the start of, uh, working with them.
What should we have, copies or?
See what we.
Where, I mean, I think, I mean, we'll all see how it plays out, um, but, uh, I think everybody's, has a good understanding that we, it might be a long uphill battle to fight. Moving it from the, from Route one sixty-nine site, so.
Yeah.
We're looking at trying to, maybe some cooperation might be the better route to go, and, but we also want to do it in the best interest of Charlton, so.
Yeah.
That's what we're working towards, the first meeting, now that they've actually hired the attorney, the first meeting with the LNG committee where we're actually hopefully gonna start accomplishing something this next Monday.
We went Monday's meeting.
So I.
You went to Monday's meeting?
No, I was only there for a few minutes and then I left.
Okay.
Last.
I forgot about it, but I don't think I've known to that committee anymore.
No, you're an alternate.
Oh.
I actually added you to an email today because I said, oh, you, they keep losing you, everybody has their alternate, they only are keeping the main members, but I actually put, added you to the email today, because you're considered an alternate.
Yes. Okay, okay.
It almost seems like a dumb deal once they set their sights on the town according to the lawyer, the night.
It, and that's what the attorney pretty much said, so, you know, I'm trying to work with them and the LNG committee's gonna be trying to work with them to, to do what we can to get, do everything, make sure safety is, of course, the number one concern.
Yeah.
And then, you know, do everything we can get that might benefit Charl, Charlton Emergency Service, whatever it may be, you know, to try to, uh, the town try to benefit as much as we can from the project. Because it, it does sound like that we don't have a whole lot of choice in the matter, so.
Right.
And that's why we're granting the extension in hopes that in the meantime, that we come to sort, to some sort of resolution with NEC, the company.
Yep.
You know, between the town and NEC, that by the time they actually get before the sighting board, they're in agreement with the town, what the town would like to see, and we can cooperate with them to give them. For lack of a better term, endorsement for the project on that site.
And, and there's not much of a chance of moving it off of one sixty-nine at this point?
Um. The only thing I can say is they have a lot of issues to address, it's not something actually at the town level, it's whether they can actually pull it off on, I, I mean, I've been looking at it and I'm not. They have a lot of issues to address that are over and above the town, whether they're gonna actually be able to build it on this site, and I mean, the state's actually questioning it, maybe they can resolve all their issues, but they do have a lot of issues. This site is really restricting them, and I think it's really making their difficult, and now, as you've probably seen that. The Millennium Company has said that they will not allow them to cross it properly with the gas lines, so the next question is, well, how do they get the gas there?
There's a right of.
Hmm?
Doesn't, um, Mass Electric National Grid have a right of way across that property? Doesn't um Mass Electric National Grid have a right of way across that property?
Uh behind the property.
But it's probably so easy, was it the right of way, it's very specific for the purpose of.
You don't think that because that's National Grid and they're dealing with National Grid that they're.
In acting national. Well, acting National Grid wrote a letter to the siding board saying, you better not do anything on our property.
Okay.
Oh.
Did they?
Which is very interesting considering this, you know?
I didn't hear about that one.
Yeah, they actually submitted a letter to the state siding board, they don't do anything in our right of way.
That's, that's. That's, that's good for us.
Which is odd, because they're selling the LNG to the National Grid.
Grid, right.
But I don't know if it's because this is electric, the other diffusion's gas, I don't know, but I actually was surprised to see that.
Yeah, I don't know, okay.
So I'm not saying that they can't get it there, but it's going to be more complicated for them, which is turned more expensive too, so. And there's other items that the state, the siding board is requesting out of them that they haven't addressed everything yet, so.
So basically false to the host agreement for us to maybe get some type of benefit from the town.
Well, they have proposed something and actually I've been discussing with that with them now, that um I've read this agreement and basically, you know, it says they'll pay the taxes, well, of course you will, any property in town will, you know?
And that's it.
And that they'll give, they'll give emergency services training, well, I think that's a requirement for these facilities to provide that, so. And then they uh said that they would do uh energy audits on certain buildings, like, you know, Bay Path, school and.
So doesn't Mass Safe do that for free anyways?
Well, and the other fact, the other, the fact remains, those buildings are never gonna see gas anytime in our future, in our lifetime, because the cost of getting the infrastructure to put gas to those buildings, you know?
Yep.
So it's really, nothing in that agreement's really benefiting Charlton. So that's what we're, you know, what can we do to get things to benefit Charlton?
Did they originally come to us or did we go out looking for that? You know?
No, they actually, they wrote the original agreement.
This has been going on since, this has been go, well.
But this, this is the only thing that they had put in writing, I think there's been verbal discussion, but this is the only agreement that's proposal that's been put in writing and was from them to the town.
In when, was it recently or?
No, it's been a while ago.
No.
They've actually turned the um, I guess, the review of the agreement and possibly come up to a future agreement to the LNG committee now.
Right.
Which involves multiple departments as well as.
Okay, is this a lawyer involved in that too?
And a lawyer.
Right, so, I mean, the lawyer's been down this road, he's actually um stated that he did the original host agreement in Massachusetts.
Okay.
Yes, he started it and now, now it's for energy and now they've evolved into the, you know, marijuana facilities and some other types of things. He actually did the original host agreement.
Interesting thing he said to the meeting though, it's like, even though they can, they could, they'll bypass the zoning, which they're looking for. But also, if you think to try to slip a Mickey into the host agreement, the ruling, the the signing board has struck that out as, oh, agreements. Oh, they'll come back and say, no, you don't have to do this?
Well, the, well, the siding board doesn't really care if you get a host agreement or not, it's totally between the applicant and the town.
No. Yeah. Yeah.
So they don't have to prove the.
There's no bearing on the project.
They don't have to approve the siding, they could care less if you have one or not, they're just looking at the site, the project, it is what it is.
Okay.
So that's why we, as the LNG committee and anybody else that will be involved, you know, give their two cents worth of what they, and that's why um we're trying to get people to speak up, you know, with the fire department, police department, people that could benefit from, you know, helping them do their jobs from something like this. And then anything else that we might be able to get to help benefit the town. I I actually was in discussions with their, and that, they keep switching representatives, which makes it very difficult, well, you know, last time we talked to this guy, this time we talk, now supposedly I'm gonna be talking to the same guy all the time.
Is that the one that was at the last, not last night's meeting?
Yes, uh uh David Messenger, he's he's supposedly the current representative and the permanent representative, so.
So the selection turn.
But he couldn't answer a lot of questions either, that's.
Well, he, he was on the job for four days, he just came here from Milwaukee, he knew nothing about it.
With the jabber.
Right. Yeah. Right.
So.
And he's gonna be our go-to guy, get all our questions answered.
All the information is in the library.
Well, that's what I am asking him questions now, to try to get him to have answers to those questions before the meeting, cause I know it's a learning curve for him, cause he walked into this and he barely doesn't know what's going on.
Have.
So I'm asking him questions that are pertinent to Charlton to try to help we give him time to answer the questions by the meeting on Monday. And I, of course, there'll be more questions, but I'm trying to keep communications open with him and try to.
Mm-hmm, yep, show that we're showing good faith.
That's right, that we wanna make, look, well, we we want to have a good faith with them, so I'm trying to show him that we are willing to do that, so.
Okay. Right. So Jake is no longer, he he was our name being, not his.
David's out of the picture at the moment, that's all I know, I don't know what his status is, but now we're working with David, they've assigned him to this project. So.
Alright, this letter looks good.
Yes.
Yep, yep.
So, okay, then I will mail them up to the representatives.
So send them, send them.
Yep.
Quick. Thank you, Randy.
And the last but not least, it took me a while to get around with this, this LNG's been consuming, gaining my time, quite a bit of it.
Yeah.
I think.
We're hoping that slows down, but this is a request, an RFP for uh professional for the zoning, but, oh, here, I'm sorry, I'm around.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, great.
If uh, the only thing I haven't uh, I've left blank in here, is when did you want to be, well, first I wanna make sure that everybody's satisfied with the language in it.
That's not a pay.
And then um it's also, we do start mailing out that, I've actually um talked to a couple of people, I I actually, somebody that I have used in the past, actually somebody recommended me and it's like, yeah, I do happen to know him, you know? But uh also somebody have recommended, um some people have recommended some other people that um do this, that are professionals, that are good at it, you know? So I think we're going to do, we really should do a thorough review so that.
So we're still waiting on the diagnostics from the CMR PC?
Right, they're supposed to be like any time now, but we have not received it, yeah.
And that's, and that's gonna feed into this.
I got a email from CMR PC, I'm gonna forward it to you, cause I don't think you got it, about their services and everything, what they can and can't help us with.
Right, right.
Okay. Let's move, I gotta check that out.
Yeah, that would be good to have. I mean, if you wanted to, I don't have to do this tonight, but if you'd rather take the time to go through it and if you have any recommendations.
It's cause we did.
Yeah. Yes.
Um I know Patty would like to get it done sooner than later, but I want it to be right also, so.
True.
If you take it home with you, give yourself some time to review it and then feel free to email me with any comments or anything.
Yeah.
You can email it, okay.
And like I said, the only thing I haven't done yet is because until it's mailed out, we really can't um set a date of when we want to, you know, the cutoff date for the season.
We don't want to stop that. How much time are you gonna give them, do you think? Um.
I think thirty days is plenty, you know, I, do you feel need to even be longer, I mean, we can take more time.
Thirty days, okay.
Thirty.
No, I, I don't think.
Thirty days for the quote?
Yes, for them to propose it, for them to submit it for the time they nail it down.
Thirty days.
Thirty days, them for to miss some, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, all it is, is submit that I'm interested in submitting and then their resume and everything of what services they provide.
Yep. Yep.
Just to respond, it doesn't necessarily to nail it down.
Okay, well, okay, uh one original, one copy, three, okay.
And I have put the amount, um the cutoff, because it's fifty thousand dollars, because that's what the town.
I saw. I saw that.
Yeah.
I could tell that might be a little light, but actually I've done it before, um and I, what happens, a lot of work is done by me and, you know, some other town staff too, to lighten the load on them to keep the fee down, cause I'm willing to do that, so.
Give us a little idea of what they're willing to do for that. Okay.
But people that have had the full service, we write and totally done by themselves, it's a day more.
Now, I know Gene likes the paper in our hand.
Yeah.
But I prefer a soft copy of it, you know, we had talked about maybe getting a.
Oh, if you want me to send, email you a copy, I'd be happy for that, oh, I can do that, I.
Yeah. I can access it wherever, anytime and.
Right, that that's the good side of that.
That's.
I'll email everybody so you'll have one of each and.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be awesome, just, I I prefer that. I might be alone, but I have a computer in front of me all day.
Right, you can.
Exactly.
Uh are you going to mail this out to different people, are you gonna advertise this or?
Well, I think we should do both, I mean, um and honestly, here, uh because I'm new to Massachusetts, I think I'll talk to CPMR.
Okay. CMR PC?
Yes.
Okay.
About where the best locations for advertising are, because I'm not familiar with Massachusetts and White House.
Massachusetts, they may be interested to quote on this as well?
Mm-hmm.
The bid on it?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Um.
But, cause I mean, now, I can send, I, and that's the thing, is you don't wanna look like you're selectively choosing, but I, and that's why I wanna get it out in an open place where anybody could have access to review it.
Right.
Yep. Yep. Yep, they could probably advertise it on their site too, don't they?
On their site.
Which would go to anyone that's a member of the.
Well, I mean, a lot of this too, is like, is the um um American Plan Association, but more importantly, there's the Mass Chapter, you know?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Connecticut Chapter, people that are local, I I always try to stay with the Mass Chapter because it's mass, every state's different in their bylaws.
Right, and they're gonna know what.
And but I'm sure that they can advertise this on their website, which that gets out to a lot of different people.
Yep. Yep. Is that the right thing? Okay.
Sorry, it took me so long to get to it, but every time I get to it, I'm sidetracked.
So we'll look at this.
No, that's alright. There's a lot going on.
When do you wanna get this out, when do you need the feedback, by end of the week?
Yeah, I actually, I'm, in all fairness, it's gonna be next week, cause I want Patty to get her report and I do.
Okay.
This is Wednesday already.
Okay.
Uh I know, and Patty, I know.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
She'll jump right on it.
I, well, I just wanna make sure she's satisfied with the language as well, and I really don't wanna send it to her on vacation, cause I know she'll read it.
She'll read it, I know she'll read it.
She needs to do something on the beach though, you know?
Yeah, she's got kids too, it's like, you know, I don't, hit a hobby, you know, build a sandcastle, I don't know.
Jack, Jack's got, he's taking care of all.
Do you have anything else?
Oh, she's very conscientious, great, but takes it, you know, take a break.
I just wanted to mention that um our attorney, David McKay.
Yep.
Um he's lining up the, I don't even know, he's lining up the um. To testify.
Okay.
Expert witnesses.
Alright.
Uh and those have to be named by October fifteenth, I believe the deadline for this whole thing is October thirtieth.
Thirtieth, I thought, yeah.
That's what I thought, yeah, it doesn't say in this letter, I gotta get back to them.
Okay.
And uh Patty sent an email, can you talk to them?
But still nothing on the land case?[1696.44]